All right, good evening and welcome to the Board of, Orange Board of Finance Special Meeting. Today's October twentieth. Call the meeting to order at seven oh one. And we'll start by having everyone introduce themselves, beginning on my right.
Uh, Jim Leahy.
Kevin McNabola.
Anna Mann.
Adip Jan.
Chad Lombardi.
Joe Nuzzo.
John Cifarelli, Finance Director.
Kevin Wuhan, thank you. Item number three is public dialogue. Since there's no one here, we'll move on to item number four, AMITI update. Mr. Nuzzo.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, everyone. Okay, so AMITI Finance Committee met a couple of weeks ago. I was not in attendance at that meeting, but I'll, I'll give us a quick update. Not too much was happening, um, at that meeting, uh, based on, uh, the agenda. So, a couple of things. One, there's a new pickup truck being purchased for about thirty-five thousand dollars, a used truck. Uh, from Mr. Martoni, looking for a used vehicle. And, uh, we allocated thirty-five thousand dollars toward that purchase. Actually, about forty thousand dollars for the purchase. So, we allocated thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, toward that. The surplus year-to-date is three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars as of September, uh, September thirty. As we see there, I know Jim did the AMITI update last meeting, uh, talking about the, uh, year-end numbers. Uh, so, not too much has happened here. It's got Trent, and we know the last three months, the surplus has grown and grew last year, as it usually does. Uh, they were able to keep their, get their two percent, um, as planned, as expected, which is fine. Uh, the medical and dental line, uh, as we all saw last year, was about a hundred and five percent. So, definitely over budget. Uh, and this year's projected to be about one oh three percent, so trending higher for sure. Again, cost of, cost of medicine, more visits, more, maybe it's more serious, uh, medical conditions happening. I mean, that, there really wasn't too much. Talked a little bit about some grants and things, but other than that, not, I know John mentioned, there may be, I guess there was supposed to be a meeting tonight for the AMITI Board of Ed?
Uh, I might, I might.
I might have missed, mistaken, like, thought it was tonight, but maybe it was last week.
There's an Orange Board of Ed meeting tonight.
Yeah, that I do.
But not AMITI.
Okay.
Oh, there's not an AMITI?
No.
I'll get those.
They didn't have school today again.
They didn't have school today?
No.
Because the big thing we're looking for, wait for the ADM.
Monday after Club Day.
Today is Diwali, well, they're, they're recognizing Diwali.
Diwali.
There were two additional religious holidays that they put in.
Yeah.
Hey, Joe, any update on the split of population for the next fiscal year?
I have not heard, and John asked me earlier tonight, I haven't heard that number, uh, as of yet. Uh, I don't know if it's out there, if you're hearing, are you guys hearing something? It's coming, I haven't heard.
I'll, I'll call Terry tomorrow and get it. She doesn't usually give it to us until she's presented it to their board, which I understand. So, it might have been done last Monday, or if they had a meeting last Monday.
Did they have a meeting last, AFC have a meeting last Monday?
Last Monday was a holiday.
Two months, two, I mean, two weeks ago.
Two weeks.
The sixth, the sixth.
And they didn't have the date of them because they collected on October first.
Well, it's as of October first.
Yeah, yes, but that would be a quick turnaround.
Yeah.
Usually around October first.
October first is when they, they, you, all their reports aren't due till the state, like, mid, mid-state, mid?
Isn't going to change for six months anyway, so we can relax, or?
I don't know.
I mean, I'm just curious.
I was not going to change with this year, right, or next year, but.
No, and she, Terry.
I don't know if there are any projections.
Terry usually emails it to us, too. Uh, at least I usually get it.
We'll get it when it's ready.
So, if they, if they, if it was out, I think we probably would have had it.
And what I was really saying was, the data that's, uh, as of October first, it isn't going to change once it comes out anyway, for six months right now, for the whole year.
Right, it is what it is, it's just what we get.
All good.
Hey, Joe, who's the insurance carrier at AMITI? Is it, uh, United Healthcare, is it Cigna? Do we know?
That's a good, no doubt.
Anthem?
It was Anthem.
Jim, you, I don't know if I know the answer.
The carrier for health insurance?
Oh, um.
Anna?
It was Anthem when I was there.
Anthem, yeah.
I don't think so. I think it's the guy that once came.
They're self-insured, though.
Oh, you're thinking about the broker?
Broker, yeah, yeah, he's the broker.
Yeah, Lindbergh and Ripple, you're probably thinking of, or Brown and Brown.
Jay, Jay.
Brown and Brown, yeah.
So, that would be their insurance, uh?
Yeah, but they're, they, they.
Broker.
They're the broker, you're saying?
They're still self-insured, though.
Yep, they're still self-insured, yeah.
Thank you.
Does that say anything else to add, Jim?
No.
No, yeah, I mean, it wasn't much happening so far.
No, the big thing would have been that last, we, we bated breath, because we kind of got ahead of benefit last year.
All right, well, thank you, Joe. Item five, Mr. Leahy.
Yeah, I've been, uh, asked a couple of times by people, just, you know, man in the street type of thing, stopping me, the gym down at Costco. So, I, I developed, uh, something to, uh, address it, shouldn't take too long. Uh, I have two thoughts, has to do with AMITI. Um, I'm trying, just, that seems very, best I can see, anyway. All right, so a couple of thoughts. Um, been hearing from people, hey, I'm hearing this, I'm hearing that. So, that's one of the things I've been doing, topic number one, regarding the increase in the budget. And the second is a more recent, uh, view of, uh, operating expenditures, looking at last year and this year. So, here we go. Uh, these, on the upper-left corner of this chart, what you have there is budget expense for two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, it also shows underneath it the debt expense for those two years. And subtracting the two, you get what I just called the non-debt expense, all right? So, you can see the numbers up there. You can see the increases, you can see the relative, what Excel tells you the percentages are. And what I've been hearing is, hey, wait a minute, I'm hearing two thing, point nine-three, I'm hearing over five percent. And so, I'm just trying to articulate what those two percentages mean. The budget increase from budget to budget was two point nine-three percent. You can see the numbers right there, fifty-six point four million to fifty-eight point one million, all right? Now, I know all of you do this, but I'm kind of spent a couple of hours this afternoon putting it in a package so that, you know, if you needed to carry it, you know, or, or edit it, that's fine by me if I made a mistake. Anyway, the non-debt expense is the budget, and that's the third line down in the, uh, copy of the Excel document on the upper left. It's the budget that any department administration is giving. So, what I'm saying there is that's a category of stuff that, depending on the department, this time it's AMITI, that they're given to be able to operate what they have for the coming year. In regional schools like AMITI, this non-debt expense is often called operating expense. So, you can hear operating expense, you can hear non-debt expense, it means the same thing. But when you look at the non-debt expense, that third column over under the word increase, you can see under the dollar sign column, that it's two point nine million. Which, compared to what it had been in the prior year as a non-debt expense, that's where the five point six-two percent comes in. So, what I'm doing for the, for the group here is to make sure that, that, first of all, to me, those are the numbers. And so, that if you two get this type of question, you can, you know, there's the data, that to me is just facts, okay? So, that's the first one, one down, one to go. Oh, by the way, this is the same chart in the upper-left for the last three years. So, in the upper-left, as you can see in the years, it's twenty-four, twenty-five compared to twenty-five, twenty-six, same data. Now, if you go down underneath that, you see twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four compared to twenty-four, twenty-five. And in that year, the increase of the budget was one point nine million, three point four nine percent. Now, the debt expense was different in that year. It had gone down, but as you can see, it didn't go down by one point three million, it went down by five hundred fifty-nine thousand. And so, what happens is, you have a non-debt expense that is different, four point nine-one versus three point four-nine, right? Uh, but the reason it doesn't have as much bandwidth difference, all right, as we saw on the last chart, it's ninety percent higher in one, in that case. It is, is because the amount of the debt reduction, the debt expense reduction, didn't go down as much. And a good example of that is the one on the far right there, there you have twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four. And this is what really had been going along for a lot of years, is the debt expense, expense for a number of years, was four point four, four point four low, four point three high, four point five low, in terms of millions. And you can see, the difference there was only sixty-seven thousand. So, as you would expect, the percentage difference from budget expense, right, to what the non-debt expense was much less. So, I just went back and checked out the data to give you a chart. So, if you have to get into more detail, and I could send you this file, all right, um, you, you have that in your hip pocket, okay? And for everybody in town as well. Okay, we reviewed this at the last meeting, I think, Joe, you mentioned you weren't here, but this is one of the charts I did. And one of the things you can see in the budget surplus for last year is that one point nine million. You hear people saying, one, um, million, nine forty-three, uh, thousand, uh, eight eighty-three, all right? So, I'm just reminding you of that, all right? And it's going to help with the next slide, but I want to get this back in our radar. We presented that at the last meeting. Now, here again, now I'm going to go back to the chart we just saw. And what we're seeing there in twenty-four, twenty-five, we can see that the surplus was one point nine million, one million nine hundred forty-three thousand, eight eighty-three. And so, what you actually had for actually spending money, the actual operating expenditure, now that all those things have been rolled up, and there may be a slight adjustment before it gets blessed by the auditors. It's fifty million, six fifty-four, five fifty-eight, okay? So, the actual, obviously, we don't have the actual for this year, right? Because we haven't ended the year yet, or you don't know what's up ahead of us. But there's that data that's out there as well. So, I wanted us to get comfortable with that number. So, what we can see, now, all I've done here is create a chart over to the right of those three components of what makes up the fifty-six point five million. And as you can see, at the bottom there, fifty point seven, uh, 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 million, maybe it should be fifty point six, uh, is for the operating expense. The debt, three point eight-five, as you can see, maybe three point eight-six, if you want to round up, all right? You can see the debt expense right over there on the left. And you can see the one point nine-four million in terms of the surplus. So, all this adds up to what the major components are of the fifty-six point five million that happened last year. Everybody good?
Yep.
Okay, now, there you see, there's the right-hand side, which is the two point nine-three million, all right? As you can see, it's still the fifty-eight point one, nothing's changed, it's just the data. Two point five-five is the debt. So, the difference is what is in the yellow in the middle column on the left, the fifty-five point five, or rounded to fifty-five point six, if you like, all right? So, it's trying to just say, okay, just, let's get everybody familiar with the numbers. You can have your opinions, but as far as the facts go, those are the facts. Okay, now, one of the things that I've heard, and you likely here heard it, maybe not, I don't know. But there's a difference, what you have here is an actual, looking at the actuals, which is the column of two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. You can see what those actual numbers are, and comparing them to the budget numbers for the current year that we're in. And since we don't have actuals now, we don't know what the surplus is, what we can say is, the money that AMITI has to spend, all right, right now, for the non-debt expense, what they can, you know, it's not debt, that they, they have to pay the debt, all right? Is the fifty-five point five-five million, right? Now, when you look at the actual operating expense from twenty-four, twenty-five, which is fifty point seven, and the amount that's available for spend, fifty-five point six, that's the yellow in the middle column on the left, the non-debt expense, or operating expense. You can see that that's a hefty jump, no, four, four point nine million, all right? So, it's over nine percent. So, I just wanted to let you know, that's the data. If you're hearing that, and people were asking me questions, and I could, so it took me a little while this afternoon to figure it out, or what I thought I figured out. And, uh, and I want, figured I'd save you the, uh, you know, if one person can do it, then everybody else can, and do with it what you want, uh, but that's the data, all right? Mr. Chairman, I think that's the last slide I have. Any questions?
How, can I just ask how many people you were asking, you like, ballpark?
Well, four or five, yeah, which I thought it was a lot, I don't, you know.
Has anybody else been asked this question at all?
The most question was the two point nine to the five point something else. In other words, I've heard this, I've heard different numbers, somebody would say.
Yeah, I think, because you brought that up last year a lot, the two, the two different numbers.
And I think it's, it's something to discuss.
Yeah. Has anybody else been asked?
I think it's a real illustration.
Yeah.
Aside taking a debt, no, no doubt, I think, I think it's very good, we haven't done it really before. I like it, uh, again, as a mentor, and always dealing with debt and finance, and taking, it's a real spend, the operating expenses are real. Uh, and I haven't seen this before, so it's, it's nice to see that, but yeah, it's, I mean, the, the increase is real, it is what it is.
But did anybody else get asked this question?
I have not, no.
And if that, that expense goes down, that is extra money on the table for the AMITI.
Sure.
Right. Did you get asked this question by anybody in the community?
Like, I was watching debate, so, where they have some things where people are.
But you didn't get asked this question?
No, not directly.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Jim, this, this is a great analysis, good analysis. It's not really all that dissimilar from what's transpired with the town budget over the last eight years. Uh, if you look at the data for the town budget over the last eight years, we've had about a one point seven million-dollar surplus on the revenue side, and a nine hundred thousand-dollar surplus on the expense side. Uh, for a total of, averaging about two point six million per year over the last seven years. And, you know, we as a board, and Selectmen as a board, I think, made a good decision in taking that money and investing it and paying down capital, pay-as-you-go. Instead of particularly bonding over the last four years, just based on where the interest rates are and have been for the last four years. Uh, I think the last great deal we had, we got on a bond was in twenty-twenty-one with the acquisition of the Racebrook property at eight point six million dollars. We bonded that, that was, uh, a, a smart move because of the interest rate being so low. I think we paid, what, one and three?
The value of the property.
One and three-quarters, John, I think it was?
A little over, no.
But, um.
But we, we did some refunding at under one, and we saved a half.
Yeah. Because I think it's important, I mean, we, we can't, I mean, we as a town, we, we can't run a twenty-six percent fund balance. We have to, we have to spend that money, we have to spend it on infrastructure, we spend it on capital.
Where's this twenty-six percent fund balance coming from?
That's the fund balance that was recorded last fiscal year in June of twenty-four, right, John?
Not that high.
No, no, not at all.
I think it's twenty-one, but it was still in the twenties.
No, every time we come.
That number there, that's in the general fund, that shows in the audit, and I think it was twenty or twenty-two percent. Everybody's got to remember, we got other costs that that has to fund.
Yeah, I was looking at the audited fund balance as of July of twenty-four.
And we also use that money, we moved three million dollars to capital, to spend capital, which you just said. And we used, I think, one point eight million in the last two budgets.
Correct.
To, to do, uh, leveling on the budgets as we're currently on.
The last two budgets.
Yeah, we were in this room.
If he's, all go back to the.
Your sheet.
To the.
That sheet.
Yeah, the sheet, yeah. I'm looking at the sheet, it says July first, twenty-twenty, twenty-four, uh, adopted budget year of fiscal year twenty-three.
Could you hold it up, Kevin, so I can see which one?
Yeah, you can have a copy of it, actually.
Just, just, no, just.
Just take it right at the top.
Flash it this way.
Yep, twenty-six point three-four percent on the very top.
Or that's before we take out money to?
For capital, that's what I'm talking about, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
I mean, AMITI does.
So, we don't have a fund balance of twenty-six percent?
Not anymore, not anymore.
Well, we never did.
Well, we had, oh, twenty-four percent, we had to split hairs, we could split hairs.
No, I'm telling you it's wrong, and every time we start talking about the fund balance, I always stop and say.
But Jim, the bottom line, it's over twenty-three percent. What I'm saying is, it's a good thing that we're spending it down.
I want you to understand, Kevin, that it's not twenty-three percent.
What is it now?
Excuse me, I didn't interrupt you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you.
It was twenty-three percent, but go ahead.
Okay, it was twenty-three percent perhaps on the top of the sheet. The appropriate way, this was just telling us, okay, here's the way it is if we don't spend anything for paving, or whatever else had to come out of it, okay? So, the, in my judgment, the proper way is, what did we land on? We never had that. Only if you said we were never going to invest in any of these other things that we all agreed we would.
Right.
So, to pick the top number and say, that's our fund balance, and have people watch it on TV, or you talk to, I would just encourage you to please tell them that was at the top of the list before we spent any money. That's my point.
That's what I, I did say that, I did say we spent.
You started by saying we had a twenty-six percent fund balance, I think I heard that.
Well.
At one point, you tell him, man, it's a balance sheet, one point.
At one point, when the audit came out, we did, and then we invested it in capital, infrastructure, and capital equipment, understood. That's, that's, and what I'm saying is, that was actually, looking back, that was a good move, because we decided to do that and spend it down, rather than pay the high interest rate of three, uh, three point seven-five percent, and amortize it over twenty years.
And fund balance is not a bad thing. Fund balance is one of the requirements to have a triple-A rating.
Exactly.
So, I don't know why, uh.
No, it is. Fund balances is a good thing, and.
Except not if you're AMITI. Right, we, we sit around this table a lot and get very anxious with AMITI when they have leftovers at the end of the year, and we do this whole analysis. But, to my knowledge, no other, did, no other department, town, Board of Ed, is held to this same level of scrutiny, where they are asked to have two different, I mean, because you, you were, you brought this up last year, Jim, when we were going through the AMITI budget. That they said they came down to two point nine-three, they started at three point seven-five, or three point nine, or something, and they got themselves down under three percent. But then you brought out the point that it's not really under three percent, it's the five point, um, whatever, the five point six-two percent, because if you take out the debt, then you really are, you know, like this whole thing. I think that when you presented both percentage numbers, that is what confused people, because maybe there wasn't this level of, of scrutiny at that point. This is completely transparent and true, and I still think that, you know, they're doing what they need to do with their, with the money. They are not asking for too much, they are, again, it is not the same as budgeting for a town, they cannot carry the same amount, they have to make sure that they are within, they don't have anywhere, any place to go to, to get more money if they run dry. If a family moves in that needs half a million dollars of special education help, they are required by law to provide that. So, my point is, and you at one point said last year, you know, we got to manage it just like we manage our own personal checkbooks.
Right.
I don't ever have to worry about some fa, random family moving into my house, and I have to provide for all of their food, and all of their clothing, and everything. That doesn't happen in my budgeting of my house, AMITI does.
This would be the chart I would ask everybody to consider.
That's only if your kids come home and they didn't tell you.
To me, this chart, to me summarizes the position that you're, you're articulating that I have, and I do. In twenty-three, twenty-four compared to twenty-two, twenty-three, two point five, two five percent.
Their debt expense was, was less.
If I could just finish.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Two point two-five percent, there was not much difference in the debt. And so, even if you said, oh, yeah, but you're getting a benefit for that, not, wasn't that much, right? Everything you said, you could say in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. Now, we're looking at a debt reduction of one point three million, that's much different conversation. In the way, when people ask me this, and they say, well, I don't understand the math, and I just said, well, listen, tell me what your mortgage is. I said, well, don't tell me, let me just say it's three thousand dollars a month, just to say. I said, now, if the next budget year, I told you it was two thousand dollars a month, two thousand dollars a month, instead of paying three, you pay two, you'd save a thousand dollars a month, thirty-six thousand a year, twenty-four thousand dollars a year. Question to you, person asking me this, do you think you'd be have more money in the new year? Oh, yeah.
Did you ask those same people?
Absolutely, I asked them that question.
If you, but you also have to prepare for the fact that you might have a long-lost cousin who then becomes your responsibility.
But you have that in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four as well, the same argument you could make.
That is true, but you also have a variety of different, um, aspects that you have to prepare for, including increase in teacher and administrator pay, increase in being self-insured.
That's your budget.
In, right.
Right, and that's the lineup, up at the top line, not the, but, not the, not the, not the expense.
The question is, what, what are you, what are you trying to get at?
It's inflated.
Because last, last.
The budget's inflated.
What you have been saying since two thousand and five.
Right.
And that's why, this year, I hope, when we have this conversation, when AMITI comes and presents in our February sixth meeting, we will have a round-the-table conversation about what we believe we should be supporting our school district, our school district, not AMITI. It's not some foreign body that we are sending money to, it's ours, it's where our kids go to.
Right.
I hope we have a live conversation.
Right.
Can I finish?
Sure.
I hope we have a live conversation and not a proxy vote of randomly why we want zero percent, four percent, whatever, zero percent. Can we have a live conversation?
So, Anna, I would like to say something after, so you are pointing to me zero percent, so sometimes.
That was what you're, that was what you're.
Yeah, so sometimes it seems like you have been elected by the town, so it is, as a Board of Finance, it is our duty to monitor the expenses for the town.
I agree completely.
But it seems as if you are working for AMITI, like, zero percent, five percent, here, decisions are made as a team.
But we didn't have a conversation, Gee.
No, we had this discussion, so this one point, one point three million dollars reduced debt expense, this is extra money for the AMITI, and we all agree that we are here to support AMITI. Is there anybody in the room who doesn't support AMITI? It seems like you want to blame us, we don't support, my daughter went to AMITI.
I, I know, that's a principle. I, but we didn't have that conversation live. The conversation I was just asking for, we didn't have it live, we had it by proxy, we had it by email. We didn't have that conversation live last, last year.
Yes, we did.
No, we didn't, you.
No, we ran out of time.
We ran out of time.
Yeah.
You emailed each of us individually, Jim.
This year, just, I'm going to correct one thing you said, and you wouldn't, you wouldn't know it was wrong.
That's why I, I want to have.
You, you wouldn't know it was wrong when you said February sixth. AMITI's coming to our January meeting.
Oh, pardon me.
They already asked us to come early, so then on the sixth, or whatever other meeting, we'll be able to.
It will be back to how it was a couple of years ago.
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, last year, they, they came on the all-day.
That was an aberration.
And so, this year, they've already reached out to John to come earlier for our January meeting, I guess that was today, or whenever it was.
Couple of weeks ago.
Oh, okay, sorry, so.
Well, whenever they come present.
Last year, they were going to come in January also, when Terry called and asked to postpone it till our all-day meeting.
I thought they wanted to be part of the big presentation day, that's why I thought that was going forward in perpetuity. Whenever we, that we do get that, can we just have a live conversation so that we don't do the proxy vote?
Absolutely.
Made me very.
Yes, if they come in January, then we'll have plenty of time after that.
Yeah, it chooses the way it always works, too, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, absolutely.
Maybe we all support AMITI, like, sometimes, Anna, when you are speaking, it seems that you are the only one here who supports AMITI.
I don't mean to make it sound like that.
But it sounds like that.
I, I, I will say that for many, many years, Jim has felt like, has stated very publicly, that it's, it's an inflated budget, and I totally disagree. So, we can disagree on that.
Yeah, no, we all.
And I don't, and I.
We can, yeah.
When things are put out in the paper and by Jim, and they are railing against the AMITI budget, it does feel like, like that is against the AMITI budget.
Yeah, again, I personally think it is not against the AMITI budget, it is, as Board of Finance or the Orange, it is our duty to monitor the costs incurred by AMITI or any other entity that is a cost center to the town.
Yeah, and we go through this every year, I mean, the Board of Finance collectively makes a recommendation to what the budget should be, and in the end, it doesn't matter, it really doesn't matter. Because at the end, they make the decision, and they, and they fund it, so.
So, Kevin, would you, would you, you, you mentioned some things, and John and I have been doing the exact analysis, which we still owe it to you guys to share. Would you just remind, remind me, you said on the average over a certain number of years, there was a, a surplus in revenue for the town and a surplus of expense for the town. Could you, could you tell me that number again?
Just going back to two thousand eighteen, um, if you average all the, uh, surpluses on the revenue side.
Yes, sir.
You come around one point seven million.
Okay.
And nine hundred thousand, um, underrun on expense, for a total of an average of about two point six million. And I got all the, I think I shared those sheets with you last year, remember the old sheets?
Yeah, we take, well, unbeknownst to you guys, John and I have put in over fifteen hours of work, and I've done more than that on my own time to create a slide. I can show you.
You'd be happy to.
I found it, despite my computer being hacked.
Oh, yeah, I think we went through this sheet before.
No, no, we didn't.
Kevin, with your numbers, that also includes the AMITI surplus is built into that.
Town analysis.
That does, yeah, right, the AMITI surplus was built in before, right, yep.
Okay, so, we have something we can share, but I don't think it's for tonight, because John, John doesn't know, you're not going to know.
Yeah, you got to, you got to factor, like, Kevin made a point, you got to take that, you should take that out, the AMITI, because of the refund, because you don't really.
We'd have to figure it out, there's more analysis to do.
Maybe just a few years back.
That's it, Mr. Chairman, unless you want.
Well, I have something to add. My thing is, it seems like that the surplus is a little bit of a bone of contention every year at AMITI. So, my thinking was, to make it a little more digestible to the public, would it make sense to take some of the surplus, and would this board maybe recommend, make a recommendation, to take some of that surplus and pay down the debt proactively? I'm assuming some of these bonds are callable, which means we don't have to wait for them to mature.
Yep.
To pay them off.
I mean, that's one option.
Now, now, there's op, you know, there, there's, financially speaking, there's reasons to do and not do that. But, again, if we said, you know, take twenty-five percent of the surplus and pay off debt, just like we, you would do personally. I think that's something that would be digestible to, to the non-financial person, I think it makes a lot of sense, especially if you think, I think they're expecting to start bonding again in twenty-twenty-seven. So, it might give us a couple of years where maybe we're really not, are not paying much at all, to make. So it might give us a couple of years where maybe we're really not, are not paying much at all to make those numbers even more, you know, to look even better. You know, if we continue to have this budget situation where we're gonna have a pretty substantial surplus, it might, again, they're not obligated to do it, but it might make sense for the board to make that recommendation just to get that conversation going at their level.
Keep the money with AMITI.
Yeah, well, yeah, they would be making the, you know, we would be making the recommendation.
Right.
They would be voting on it and making a decision. I think it makes sense, assuming the bonds are callable. I, I haven't seen the, the, the offer.
I mean, the reality is, this board has made the right decisions in, in doing, paying capital as you go rather than financing it based on where the interest rates are. I mean, if you do a three million dollar, um, capital, if we didn't pay it out of our, our surplus and we decided to bond it, three million dollars, we'd be paying about a million one in interest over a twenty-year period. And if you did six million, it'd be two point two million over a twenty-year period. So I, I, I think this board collectively has made the right call in doing it the way we've been doing it. That's all I was trying to make a point.
Yeah, and my thing is like with AMITI, it might, the surplus seems like to be the bone of contention. So if we, if we made a recommendation that maybe they took a percentage of that, paid off some debt, that might make it more digestible.
Yeah, no, it's a good. They keep their two percent as they've been and then use the rest for.
Yeah, I mean, whatever the number ends up coming, it seems like it's, you know, it, it, the number comes out of wherever it comes out of, but.
I think the, the only thing, and I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I think that's a great suggestion. There was some adjustments in their interpretation of how they can, what they can use the fund balance for. Because they can't keep a fund balance, right? As a regional school district, they're not allowed to. Uh, so I don't know if that, that would be something that they, you know, would know or research or whatever. They can only keep a certain percentage to apply to different parts of their budget. And so based on the state law, I just don't know it as a regional school district.
Why did it if it's in there? Why did, if, if the surplus is there, you could maybe, maybe.
Yeah, I don't know. That's what I'm saying. I just don't know. That was one of the, that, that was the disconnect before is how much they had to return to the towns versus how much they were not allowed to return or that they had to keep kind of thing or couldn't keep.
Yeah, the two percent is based on capital, right?
Yeah, they're allowed to put it there.
They're allowed to put their two percent, but they can't just use it for anything.
Correct.
So I just don't know what they can use that.
But we should probably read that law a little closer. Might be able to service debt to Chad's point with that, with that. Keep my money with them, yeah.
And I think Bethany and Woodbridge would be, I mean, that would be a benefit for all three towns.
Yeah.
You know, you know, I can't see someone not being like, oh, oh, we don't want, you know, I mean, that, it just, and then it makes the, the surplus a little more, you know, it, it, it.
Palpable.
Yeah, cause then, you know, whatever we end up with, a percentage of it's gonna go towards the paying down the debt.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Where that number comes, they would probably have to come up with that, but I think we could make a comfortable recommendation, something that makes sense on our.
If they're allowed to do it.
If they're allowed to do it and if the bonds are callable. I'm assuming.
Right, if they're allowed to do it on all levels.
Yes, it's all hypothetical.
All right, so moving on to item six, discussion and approval of minutes from September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting.
John, I assume you're batting Lena since both Yankees and Red Sox are out of the playoffs now.
Yeah, you had to bring that up, huh?
Well, both of us are.
A game tonight? Yeah, Pinks two, under eight.
Eight, thank you.
On the date, twelve thirty-one.
Oh.
Two thousand and twenty-four.
Twenty-one thousand, oh, twenty-three, gosh, that's a ways in the future.
Under number nine. On the second line, Mr. Sifarelli expressed some concern that interest rates, I think we should use the word trending lower there.
John, were you making my comment on that line, John? And the rest of that paragraph, it felt like we were saying that about not the year ending, but the year coming. The year that we're in.
Right.
But it's under the number nine. We're reviewing expenses for the year that just ended.
I think we were talking about, we were speaking about revenue at the time and revenue in the, in the upcoming budget.
Okay.
I said, interest rates are projected to go down. So Mr. Williams's projections on the interest rates in the coming budget would go down.
Could I, could I suggest that, first of all, why don't we, on that very paragraph and near that sentence, John, just take out the word while and just say, Mr. Nelly, he noted cell tower revenue was steady at three hundred eighty K and put a period there.
Yeah.
And then, how about before, Mr. Sifarelli, say something like for the coming year? John, does that make sense to tee up your?
For the coming year, Mr. Sifarelli.
Yeah, Mr. Sifarelli expressed some, whatever you said before.
Maybe trending lower?
Well, yeah.
Could be, could be trending.
Could be, yeah, could be, yeah.
Could be trending lower.
All right.
Who knows?
Well, that was, that was the nature of that conversation. You were concerned that.
Right, because we, I think we spoke about our interests were over a million dollars at the time.
Do we believe for the coming year, the next sentence, the University of Manhattan?
Oh, I got a change on that.
Okay, thank you.
The, uh, that hundred thousand cross off for use of the Hubble property because UNH owns that. I would put, uh, hundred thousand dollars payment and woo with taxes.
And ended at that.
And ended at that.
Okay, thank you, John.
But keep the university's leaving this location right now.
Right, I think they've actually abandoned it. I don't see the bus that runs between the two.
And they're doing a lot of work at the old railroad salvage and they're gonna put a thing going over the road.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
Page three, that third pair, third bullet up there at the end of the second sentence where it says a hundred and ten thousand, that should be a hundred thousand. And I was speaking to the pension for the police and town hall employees, the benefit plan, the old benefit plan there. That's all I have.
Uh, I've read a couple, um, Kevin, if you wish.
Absolutely.
Uh, on page two. Just wanna note that that saving of forty thousand up there on the number five, paragraph one, great example of doing more with less. Things we all do at home.
Those boilers actually went in last weekend.
Both of them, John?
Good.
Just in time, right?
Yeah.
But he sees it.
I think they had a, use a crane to put them in. I think they told me they were six hundred and fifty pounds each.
On item eight, John, the last part of the, uh, sentence. But he feels that in the town of Orange, the life expectancy, so Kevin, this is you, it turns out, uh, the life expectancy for the truck, um, for the trucks, I thought it would be, rather than could actually be longer. How about have it historically been longer? Are you good with that? I think that's.
Yep.
I think that was the flavor of what you said.
Yeah.
Um, okay, on the, for the final page at the top, bullet number two. Um, my mind went this way on that first sentence. Expenditures for legal is over budget due to the numerous tax appeals. From, I guess, commercial properties. I'd like to ma- make sure we make that note. I know it's properties on the poster, but I just assume emphasize the word commercial myself. In the next, uh, bullet on first sentence, uh, uh, I would have said, board members continue to review, I would take out each, uh, individual line items and make them plural rather than each. It could go either way. So if someone says no, I'd put it back that other way. I'm not, I'm unhappy with it. Um, on the eleven, Lauren's page here. Um, my brain needed a comma after word voting. I don't know why. Mrs., uh, Mr. Sifarelli noted that due to early voting, comma, the location, I, I don't know, it just flowed better. But I'll, I'll defer to Anna if that's not appropriate.
Yep.
Uh, and the last sentence, I don't know how Apple Pay, uh, is the official, but I don't know if a, both A and P should be capped. But someone who uses Apple Pay would know better than me. Uh, but, you know, PowerPoint can't be anything but a po- uh, capital in the world of, 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 uh, current day electronics. I don't know where Apple Play is. So that's what you got.
Should be cap, it's a.
Cap A, cap P?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a proper.
You got that one.
Is capital a vote?
Yeah, because Apple is a.
That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
A and P.
Great.
Unless you're playing with apples.
Anyone else?
I saw there was kind of a green egg. Have you heard anything? We looking to meet with them before year end, they saw on bullet number ten? Just curious on status and where they are and plan forward.
Well, we have there mo- most likely before the end of the year. We got a couple of meetings yet. John, any forecast on that?
Uh, I think probably what I gave it before.
Should we, just to clarify back, actually back to the minutes, should it say likely before the end of the calendar year? Cause we speak a lot in fiscal year.
Ah, excellent point. I think it was, I think the inference there was calendar, I think. But that could be, we should clarify that. John, what do you wanna commit to here with this edit?
I gotta speak to him if you wanna leave with him.
Yep, no, we'll see if we get him.
Probably November, better December.
We wanted to talk to them before this budget.
Yes.
Thanks for bringing that up, Joe.
Okay, is there a motion to approve as amended?
So moved.
Yep.
By Kevin. Is there a second?
Second, sure.
Second by Jim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, abstain.
Two abstentions.
Two abstentions. Great, thank you very much. Item seven, John, you always do this to me since I've been sitting here. Prefer to table this because we might have different people.
We've still gotta meet.
I know we have to meet, but don't we usually put it off?
No, I'm being asked to give it to the town court this month, so.
Okay, then we won't table it and we'll make a decision.
You, you're kinda locked into who's ever running or who's ever here is kinda locked into these dates because other commissions or committees meet other.
Because this doesn't have our all-day meeting on it. That's the, okay, that's the trickier one.
But I already have it booked in the.
I know.
On the calendar.
And it's February sixth, it's already in.
Yeah, oh, yeah. It's, it's become book your snow day.
And we also sometimes have special meetings.
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we'll add those in.
Regular.
All right.
These are just our regular board of finance.
Yes, seven o'clock, town hall.
Or here.
Or here, yeah.
In October.
If it, if we have to move a time or a place, it then becomes a special meeting.
Right. Okay. Then is everybody good with these dates?
All good.
All good.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-sixth board of finance meeting schedule?
So moved.
motion by Kevin, second? Someone, Ajit? Any further discussion? All those in favor? I oppose, abstain unanimously, thank you. Okay, now here it is, item number eight, discuss July first, twenty twenty-seven budget, all-day meeting, February sixth, twenty twenty-six.
Okay, put that on the calendar just to give you update on what I'm doing. By the end of the week or the beginning of next week, all departments will have their materials for the budget. They'll have to hand them back to me middle of December sometime, which then I'll go over them and put them in order for your February sixth meeting, all-day meeting. We've also so put out the capital requests for the year. They're coming back, I believe, also the beginning of December. I'm not sure if we're gonna handle it the way we handled it last year or if there's gonna be a capital planning committee set up again, head, headed by somebody other than Ralph Falconquist, obviously. Who'll be another board of selectmen member. I'm not sure how that's gonna, gonna go. I don't know if anybody has any feelings on that here. I can bring it back to discussion.
I would encourage you to use that same spreadsheet that we've been using in the past.
Yeah, that'll all happen, but whether you liked it doing it like we did last year yourselves.
What other feedback did you have from the other participants in the process other than Ralph, who were, you know, what was their thought?
It was, it was easier last year because of the circumstances.
Yes.
But it doesn't matter to me either way.
I think we're just looking for output that's been thought through and not, you know, after you come to us, somebody comes, oh, by the way, I have this half million dollar, you know. We just don't, that's what we wanna avoid, right? We wanna make sure we have a, a full set of what's out there in the corral for which we choose which horses we wanna ride and invest in.
I mean, my, my, my thing about the Oak and Quest committee, we, we had different representatives, a different town departments on it. And sometimes they advocated, advocated more for their items than what was needed. So that was always my concern there.
But we're gonna have that now with them just coming to us without oversight committee.
The new committee, the only voting members may even be the people appointed to the committee.
Well, who, who does the appointing?
The, whoever the first selectman is.
Oh.
So. See, I never voted on that committee. Other members did. Uh, Mike Ray voted, Bob Britton voted. Uh, Bob, uh, Bob Gangney voted. I think I missed somebody along with the three outside residents. So it wasn't always what you think it should have been.
John, isn't it fair to say that when they came in with their top fifteen, which the top five pretty much gave, came up to a number that would be historically what we would invest capital in? That you, working with us, also, whether you had a vote or not, had that broader perspective that you could bring to the table?
Sometimes we thought that what they did was not incorrect and we rec- we recommend it as a town.
Yes.
Myself and Jim, and I think even Kevin said in a couple of meetings, something different at times.
I think we've got a good process, but, um, what do you guys think?
Yeah, to John's point, I think it makes, I mean, it makes sense for the department heads to propose their capital projects, but for them to vote on their projects, I think is kind of waters down the system, right?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, or they can, they can vote as a, um, like a non-binding kind of recommendation or that can be recorded in minutes or something that, you know.
I personally like the way we did it last year. Yep. It's not always up to me. I mean, it's really up to you guys.
I mean, typically what happens.
It's not up to us, it's up to the board of selectmen.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Board of selects, right.
But you, you guys in the end are the ones that appropriate the money regardless of what they recommend.
Correct.
Not that says you have to follow their recommendations.
No, we usually don't. To be honest, I mean, we, you know, we'll take some of the priority items or some lesser items.
Some that has to do with how much money we have in the past.
Correct. Yep. Okay.
Yeah, the question. Yeah, I think it worked out fine last year.
John, can you help me understand why we call it a two, July first, two thousand twenty-seven budget? I would have thought next year's budget would be what we call twenty-six, twenty-seven. Is, am I missing something?
No, you're right.
Yeah, you know what, I.
It should be twenty-six.
Just one hundred.
Slow the dates down.
I'm working with too many years right now.
Slow down, John. We're already going way fast enough.
Too fast.
That's the truth.
All right, item number nine then, the review revenue and expense reports for October twenty twenty-five.
Okay, I got revenue on the chart here. We're gonna do them one at a time. John, how you feeling about revenue?
I think we're okay. I, I, I don't see any problems. I always look at the tax collection.
Right.
And we're pretty good at the collecting.
Page two, if you're looking at it in your, in your electronics or wherever. You can see we're at fifty-five point nine after, uh, three and a half months and through the first collection of the real estate, real property there.
Looks like it's right on schedule.
I, I would have the same impression. I thought conveyance fee looked pretty good there, right underneath it on the John Clark area, forty-two percent.
Last year, we were worried about that, that turned up pretty good in the new year. You never know what's selling and not selling. You know, you got, you got a few big properties on the post road that are up for sale. If they sell, we'll get a little more conveyance fee on that too.
Oh, good thing.
UNH, we still would, even though they're a nonprofit.
Uh, yes, depending who purchases it, they could go back on the tax rules.
I know this is not a reminder for everybody in this room, but it may be a reminder for people, uh, watching on OGAD or however else. If a property is vacant, no longer there, Fridays, for example, at the corner of my street, whenever road and the post road, we are still getting the absolute majority of the tax, even though it is not being used as a structure. Now, this is not a, this is not to say that it would be great to have everything vacant, but it does say that when you see something vacant, right, it doesn't mean that our tax base is going down. It may well go down if the, if the value of the property over time itself goes down. We get the, we get the taxes on the owner of the property, not the resident of the property who leases it. I just wanna make sure everybody, uh, uh, is aware of that. Okay, thank you. Lost my glasses already. John, I had one question on the, on the revenue. It's hidden here. it's hidden here. Um, maybe it was in expense, John. I don't think there's anything valuable for me to ask on that. Any questions on the revenue team? Chad, Joe, Anna?
No.
No.
Okay, we'll flip to the expenses. How about an aggregate, common, John, from the expense side of the bus?
Yeah, there's a couple of spots, there's a couple of spots where electricity and water, I think we might have a problem during the year. We used a lot of water for irrigation this year on the ball fields.
Okay, could you kinda alert us to what page we're talking?
It's in Park and Rec area, but it's, it's in a lot of the different electricity accounts also, in the different departments.
So let's just find one, sir, as an example.
I'll, I'll give you the water one in Park and Rec.
Okay.
Give me a second here.
Public Works, Park and Rec, that must be clear right now. Park, Park, yeah, okay. Oh, there it is. Looks like it's in and around fourteen, sixteen or, or maybe, no, it's sixteen and perhaps after that, Johnny. What, what am I looking for, water?
Uh, page sixteen, just the maintenance.
Okay, we have electric.
Maintenance, I'm page seventeen.
Seventeen, thank you.
If you look at one, two, three, four, five, six down, we budgeted twenty-five thousand for water. We've already spent twenty-two thousand, seven sixty, and I believe I have another bill right now for another five thousand dollars. So we're gonna be over on that.
What's causing this besides the fact that we all know we've been having near drought?
The drought, and they've, have gone up on their rates, yeah. Last year, and I think I probably, you probably remember me telling you this, some of the sprinklers didn't get put on in the fields, and we had a lot of problems with the grass dying because of it.
Mm-hmm.
This year, we have a new person working the fields, a part-time person. They used to be, that's a part-owner of a golf course here, and he's really working the fields and cotton grass, and he's actually saving us some money because.
Maintaining equipment.
Maintaining equipment, and he's fixing the sprinkler heads that have been run over by the lawn, the lawnmower. So where we used to have to call somebody in to do that before.
So the water rates have been, gone up?
And we're using a lot more water.
Okay, uh, will this translate into higher fees for usage of the fields by outside, um, people that use the fields? I think it should.
I, we, I don't have control of that, but I will mention that to the Park and Rec director.
Thank you, cause we've talked about that all the summer programs and stuff, right? Um, we.
The lights, the, the water, yeah.
John, the field improvements, since they're in that area code, I see the sixty-six encumbrance making, you know, so you had to just educate me or help my mind remember what you told me two months ago, or something like that?
I know, thirty thousand of it is, we gave them, uh, money to fix the road field on, on Old Tavern Road, which they're currently doing.
Okay.
I went up there yesterday, take a look at it. The whole infield's been skinned out, and they're working on bringing in new clay to put down on the infield itself. The lips had gotten very high there. If the ball hits the lips, it could take kids' teeth out and stuff, you get bad bouncing.
I'm gonna be at third base again. John, if we go back to, uh, two pages to fifteen, if we could, I'm seeing under a library building. I think it's library building, is this fifteen? No, it's thirteen. Fourteen, sixteen, Jesus, I can't slide this thing well enough.
What page, Jim?
Uh, fifteen, uh, yeah. There it is. Repair and maintenance in the library building, all, you know, I'm seeing thirty thousand transferred and encumbrance for that, almost the same thirty. Is this something we talked about, and if you could just remind us?
They're doing more of those, uh, what are they, heat pumps up in the ceiling there?
Hmm.
That we've been replacing a little bit of time each year.
Okay, okay, thank you.
That may disappear next month. I think they already did the work. We're just waiting for Environmental to, uh, send us a bill.
Okay. Hey, this is a niche, Johnny, but, you know, you know, whatever. Um, let me go to page, oh, here's the, here's the page number right there. Page nineteen. Um, middle of the page, Director of Health, it's not a large amount of money, but you're already way over a fourteen hundred dollar budget by.
We got a, we got a grant for that. It's in the.
Oh, so there is revenue on the other side?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, on the next page, is it similar when we have, uh, where is it? Under community services in page twenty. Any comments about what you see there?
Community services.
Yeah, bottom, second from the, second category from the bottom.
For elderly?
The elderly, yeah.
Yeah, the senior instructor would be one, and, you know, it's almost at fifty percent. Is this something where we pay half at one time?
Senior reimbursement.
Second from the bottom, oh, sorry, from the bottom, I'm sorry.
Eh, that's probably a specific program.
Okay, all right. Bless you. Thank you. All the others that were well out of the range, it seemed to be things that come in bulk, you know, debt service, sometimes AMITI's a little ahead of schedule, which they are here, forty-four point eight percent, you know, few in the categories, few in employee benefits, we've already paid all the pensions, you know, uh, you put a hefty amount in the negotiating reserve already, so that comes out as a high, high number, and that's why.
Let me, let me speak to that a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
We, uh, we had four union contracts that ran out on July one. We settled the police, with Mr. Zoli, Corinne Lewis, and I was settled, helping him with the numbers. We settled the police contract in September that went to the Board of Selectmen, it passed them, the police, uh, passed it, so that their new numbers are in there. We're waiting for the, for the auditors to give me the reimburse, the, not the reimbursables, uh, the retros on their pay to July one. We settled the clerical union in a, last week, last week, with the Board of Selectmen approving that. Those numbers will go, those new rates will go in November, first payroll in November, probably with their retros in November, and I'll try and get the, the additions into their contract line items for our next meeting. I'm not sure I'll be able to do it. We're close to a settlement with the Supervisors Union. We have about six items outstanding now. It's just a matter of meeting when and get that done, then that go to Board of Selectmen. So the last union to negotiate with is the police dispatchers, and as of right now, they haven't even called for a meeting. So that's about it, and that only.
Well, they're short of dispatcher too, right?
One person just left this week.
And their, their contract was up July one?
July one.
They're working with that. They're just retro to the last one.
That's pretty great progress, no, John?
It's progress, but because you can only negotiate when it's starting six months before the contract runs out, when you have four contracts like that, it's not a lot of time, and it puts a big burden on us to go back and do the, the retros and all that.
From your financial end, yeah, no, but I think that getting them closed is, is.
How long of a contract are they?
They're three years, they're all three years. And the, the police, the big thing with the police, which Mr. Zoli got them to do, in the old contract, they were able to retire twenty years and just have to pay a little bit on their co-insurance until they turn sixty-five, and then they go into a, a different insurance that the town carries for them. We got them to go to twenty-five years now, and then they can retire without paying anything on their insurance. So that five years is gonna mean a lot.
It's a retention to them.
Yeah.
Good retention.
Especially because we're struggling, I mean, not just us, everybody's struggling.
Everybody is, yeah.
And I, I believe there was four or five that could have retired this year at twenty, then, and so far, they haven't. So that, I think, is probably the best thing of all.
Yeah.
We got out of them.
Yeah, it's good for the town, too.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, all set, John? Mr. Matt DeBol?
All set. I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Sure.
Second.
I'll say, I'm sorry.
Jim can take it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at eight oh one.